Thank you. The call to order the Tuesday, October 29th, 2013 Board Voting Meeting. Please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to do it properly for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Row call, please.
Mr. Colella.
Here.
Mr. Dowdell.
Here.
Mr. Drake.
Here.
Mr. McGuff.
Here.
Mr. McMasters.
Present.
Mr. St. Ledger.
Present.
Mr. Tomorello.
Here.
Mrs. White.
Here.
Mr. Zucco.
Here.
Thank you.
The Board met an executive session on October 8th, October 22nd, and this evening, October 29th, to discuss matters of personnel, negotiation, student confidentiality, and a potential legal claim.
Approval of minutes. Recommend approval of following meeting minutes for September 24th, regular Board Meeting, October 8th, Athletic and Education, October 15th, Facilities Committee, and October 22nd, Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I have, in addition to the agenda, Education Committee, Item 4, recommend approval to develop, plan, staff, and expend funds for an elementary autistic classroom beginning in the 2014-15 school year.
Thank you. We have two student district features tonight. The first is Mrs. Amy Martello, Girls Leader Association co-sponsor, and Mr. Tomorello will make this presentation.
Thank you for everyone coming. We have two presentations tonight. The first, we're starting with the GLA and Mrs. Amy Martello. I just want to read a little paragraph that was in the paper about our GLA. Plum Senior High School Girls Leaders Association has served their community for over 50 years. The organization of more than 100 members consists individuals in groups by providing their volunteer services and holding a variety of fundraisers each year. The group has 25 officers who each put together two service projects, allowing GLA to hold 50 community events per year. Each member of GLA must participate in at least four of these volunteer opportunities. Some of these projects include holding a breast cancer walk at the end of October, participating in Operation Christmas Child, visiting senior care centers, selling flowers to benefit veterans, collecting items for deployed soldiers, and much more. Almost every week, the girls have an opportunity to help in some aspect of our community. So without further ado, Mrs. Martello and the GLA.
Thank you. Hello. For the most part, we have been keeping up with everything that Mr. Tomorello had said, except we changed the breast cancer walk. Since we have new leadership, myself as a sponsor, Mrs. Shroud has retired, and Danielle, our president, was something that decided to change the breast cancer walk into something that was more relevant to our times. And currently, we have going on at the high school during all lunches, a Pink Your Teacher Hair Day. And so far, it's been quite successful. On October 31st, we hope to have a few teachers turn pink for a day. It's temporary. But that's what I like to see with this club, that they are coming up with new ideas in finding ways to raise funds for organizations such as the PA Breast Cancer Coalition for their research. And we have a lot of other things going on, where recently, we were contacted to collect items for the homeless this winter. So our club is taking initiative to just not help out in the area and the high school, but beyond. And that is one of the reasons why we were recipient of the Jefferson Award. In the spring of 2014, we will actually attend a banquet where we will receive the award and also a possibility to win another reward, which will take place in Washington, D.C. So that would be the biggest compliment of our club being in service for over 50 years to the community and beyond. And I will let Danielle speak a little bit more about GLA, which is about leadership, service, enthusiasm, enthusiastic, oh gosh, enthusiastic attitude, I should say, and responsibility.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Heener, and I am this year's GLA president. And thus far this year, we've been very successful. One of, two of our biggest projects, which I've been involved in thus far, have been open house, which the girls came and led parents around. They handed out maps, they directed people, and they ran the elevators. And we also had our first blood drive, which was fairly successful. I hope to see you all at the next blood drive, which is December 19th, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the auxiliary gym. Thank you.
May I add a few facts about the Jefferson Award? I went online.
Sure. The Jefferson Award actually is in recognition for people that are honoring the community and public service in America. And Post Gazette, Pittsburgh Post Gazette, is actually the local sponsor of this. And we were nominated by Mrs. Summer Piper, an art teacher in their school. And that is one of the requirements of this award, is to be nominated by somebody. And they go through hundreds of applications, from what I was told, and pick 50 people or groups to actually receive this award. And so it started in the Pittsburgh area in 1976, and John Craig, the editor, established this program. And from there, we've had a lot of good come from it, just in our local Pittsburgh area. But some of the national level winners that we have, Oprah Winfrey, Bill Gates, Lance Armstrong, General Colin Powell, just to name a few on that national level. And that, in a nutshell, is a Jefferson Award, in that sense. Oh, and in November, there is a leadership conference on November 16th. It's a Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00, where GLA girls will be attending. And it is in relationship to the Jefferson Award, which they're also going to give us ideas how to further our projects, take more ownership, and truly become better than what we already are, so.
Yeah, I read somewhere where they said this was like the Nobel Prize for volunteering.
Yes, that's kind of on the side note of it. It is truly like the Nobel Prize for volunteerism. So yeah, I think this is a true honor for GLA, which is a club like no other. There's no other club in the world that is based solely, it started in Plum and it stays in Plum. And it's not just for girls. We do have some honorary men who, actually, I should say, boys, teenagers, who volunteer and help out, especially for blood drives. They'll speak on our behalf. Or when we do the soldier collection, we have a lot of ROTC members helping out. And it is kind of a collaboration of things. So it's not just solely for the girls in our community, it is for others.
I've read we're in the last 10 years, GLA collected $65,000 for charities in the community. And I was totally impressed, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any more questions? Okay. Thank you.
And again, ladies, on behalf of myself and the Board and the District, thank you for all your hard work and service to our borough, and you are truly out there changing lives. So thank you and congratulations again. At this time, I want to invite Mr. Jeff Hadley, Principal of Center Elementary, to come up and discuss and introduce our next recognition.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to introduce and help us recognize one of Plum's outstanding elementary teachers. In 2012, the United States Department of Education's Office of Educational Technology started a new initiative. Due to this initiative, the month of October is now referred to as Connected Educator Month. Throughout October, a variety of technology-related activities take place across the nation, as well as opportunities to recognize outstanding educators whose creative approaches in using technology have enhanced learning and serve as an example of what we should strive for in every classroom for every child. In collaboration with the White House, our intermediate unit asked local school districts for nominations to recognize an educator that meets this criteria and is worthy of being considered a champion of change. I was very proud to nominate Missy Karkowski, a second-grade teacher at Center Elementary School, and was thrilled when I learned that she was selected to be recognized as a champion of change. Due to her commitment to integrating technology in every area of her instruction, having served as a technology coach in our school district, her desire to seek out professional learning opportunities in the area of technology, and her willingness to provide support and training to teachers throughout the district, it was clear that Mrs. Karkowski was worthy of this recognition. At this time, I'm honored to introduce and help recognize this evening, Missy Karkowski, a 2013 Champion of Change.
I just wanted to really thank Jeff first for the kind words and for nominating me. Thank you very much. That's, I'm almost in tears with everything that he said. I wanted to thank the school board for acknowledging this award today and also for letting me attend many of the tech conferences that I've gone to. I wouldn't be the teacher that I am today without that. And I did want to thank Dr. Glasspool and for supporting me and encouraging me. And this year, instead of attending PTC, Dana Piverato and I hopefully will be presenting at PTC. So we're very excited to represent Plum's school district at Hershey. And lastly, I want to thank my students because they inspire me each and every day, and it's the reason that I'm here and that I love teaching. Thank you.
At this time, we'll entertain citizen comments on agenda items. Any citizen comments on agenda items? We'll move to citizen comments on non-agenda items.
Good evening. J.R. Pilick, 416 Sun Valley Drive. Actually, just want to take a moment to thank the entire community of Plum and what they've done over the weekend by coming out to support our festival and the park and costume parade. We had over 500 people, including at least 300 kids, show up to trick-or-treat along the parade route, play games, and meet some of Pittsburgh's finest, like the Pirate Parrot and Kenny Kangaroo. I'd also like to thank the entire school district, especially Dr. Glasspool, for helping us promote this event and get the word going out there to the community and ensure that the event keeps growing each year. Thank you to the many donations and volunteers from the teachers, the administrative assistants, the paraprofessionals, and the administration. And thank you to the Plum High School students and GLA, which we just talked about, how amazing they are in the community, and FEA, the Future Educators, as well as the Plum Cheerleaders. They were all there to support the event and help out at different games and pass out candy to all the little ones. Additionally, Pivik Student Government was in attendance, helping out as well. And we couldn't do it without some of our sponsors, especially the Mayor, Richard Rivnack, and Dr. Stefnick and Rich Nesbit. Without their support each year, we couldn't put it on. Each year, this event honors the life of Kim Brenna and Michaela Griffith, and at the same time, continues to benefit another family in Plum. This year was special for us as teachers. We were able to honor the life of Susan Pennal. This event, all money raised at it, this event, went to the Susan Pennal Memorial Fund, and I'm proud to let the community know and thank them for helping us raise $4,522 for Susan's children's future. Again, I truly think that is, it doesn't sound like a lot of money at first, but when you consider this is a two-hour costume parade, and we're able to raise that amount of money, it is truly amazing, all the support we get from the community every year. Again, thank you to all that had a part in making it such a huge success, and I hope to see you all next year because we will have to continue, even if we have to find a bigger place. Thank you.
Any additional citizen comments on non-agenda items?
Mr. Drake, take me a minute to get down.
Thank you.
I rise and want to thank PTA for holding the, or their candidate form on October 21st. I thought it was enlightening for all the citizens, and it was well organized, and I really thank them for that. Did some shopping the other day, and I got a little flyer, and it talked a little bit about hunger, and it talked about the 314,000 Pennsylvanians in southwestern Pennsylvania that don't have enough to eat. It talked about the hungry children that are three times more likely to poor health and two times more likely of special education, who don't get enough to eat. It talked about the hungry seniors that are five times more likely to experience depression and twice as likely to be diabetic. It talks about the 30% of our elderly seniors who are forced to make the hard choice of paying for food or medicine due to their limited income and not food. I guess, as a Board, and you go through the budget tonight, and you're going to do that, you need to understand that the community needs balance for all parties. And I was extremely disappointed at two of the most important committee meetings of the year that I attended. The August Education Committee meeting, where the performance and achievements of our students are analyzed, critiqued, and presented, which was well done by the administrative staff. No candidates were present. In October of this month, when the budget, knowing that how difficult this budget could be, no candidates were present. And so I say to you that we must do a better job getting the citizens involved. We need to get more candidates involved, and they need to show up. You know, Johnny Cochrane said, "If it don't fit, you must acquit; or if you don't attend, you must pretend." You cannot do that. We cannot do that to the community. Another thing I want to address tonight is attendance. You know, every year, I ask the Board Secretary to provide this Board and myself with an attendance. How many times would come to meetings? And, you know, my record's pretty, pretty good. There's a bunch of people that are really good. But it's just not Board meetings. It's committee meetings. It's collective bargaining negotiations. It's grievance meetings. It's special voting meetings. It's interview meetings. And it's legislative report meetings. So when people say they come here numerous times and as often as they can, in specific time in nine to 10 months, Boards are 12-month positions. The time that we do, the time that we give is important. You do a tremendous job, a fantastic job for this community. Sometimes people don't realize how much time you do spend. I can tell you this much, that I spend over 100 days a year doing school board work, besides the work outstanding. Lastly, I want to rise and recognize somebody tonight, Mr. Gene Maricini. Gene's been our finance director, our budget director. He's the go-to person. You know, Gene was, the Board was criticized about giving Gene a $4,000 year raise three months ago. And you know what? Gene went the extra mile this past month. We had a project at Center that was 12-years-old. Mr. Maricini took his time, his energy, and I'm glad to report that we will receive $43,000 from an insurance claim from a project to help him 12-years ago. It's impressive. And for the candidate that did that, we need to look at everybody's salaries, not just Mr. Maricini's. We need to look at the $41,000 their spouses got in collective bargaining wages over the past five years in that contract. So fair is fair, and it's important that we understand that. As we go forward, remember the seniors? Remember what your obligation is to do. A fiduciary responsibility not only to the students, but to seniors in this community, as well as every student and every citizen, not just special interest. Thank you.
Do we have any other citizen comments on non-agenda items? The agenda, please.
I'm Michelle Stefnick. I live at 3020 Settlers Court. Oh, Mr. Colella, I am very sorry you were offended I didn't get to attend those two meetings. I had two deaths in my family in this past summer and fall. And so actually, I believe all of you were on an email that I responded saying, "I'm very sorry. My letter might actually be coming from postmark dot state because I had to leave and take my 80-year-old grandmother to a funeral." So maybe you should check your email. I'm here tonight to use one of my emotional tactics. I'm a mother. If that's emotional, so be it. And I'm running for school board because the children of Plum Borough need to come before the private agenda of outsourcing jobs. My phone rings every day from different custodians in this district. These are good men and women, most of whom live in Plum Borough, pay taxes in Plum Borough, pay personal, like their own, you know, property taxes, income taxes. Are you thinking about that? Because that is my question to you. What all's the fiscal note against the borough when you do this to these folks with your agenda? They aren't asking for more, and they're not asking for less, they just want their jobs. As a parent, I want to know the people that are in my child's school. I think I talked about that at the forum last week. My husband grew up here. I moved here, and we had a family together because we wanted our son to have the same experience he had, similar to what I had growing up. And here are the things that I've heard from some of these custodians. Some are positive and some are negative. The new pivot, you might have come in under budget, but there's a whole lot of work that needs to be done in that school, so y'all better pay attention. Cleaning supplies, they're not doing what they used to do. So we're going to go give Aramark more of the borough's money when their supplies aren't working. And many have been recognized. I have a folder here of stuff. I'd be happy to share with any of y'all that want to pay attention because these are human beings. They've been recognized as, "Thank you from students. Happy Custodians' Day," and some other things are in here. "Hope you're getting better soon," cards, and all kinds of things. One is a letter thanking a custodian for their help, just their outstanding service. Some letters thanking custodians for being a part of saving some children's lives. That's critical. You're not running a business, you're running a school. You're running a district where children, their innocent minds, are the most valuable thing because they're our future, and you're running them like they're a business. I ask you to think about your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Donlin Check, 170 Dimwitty Drive. Mr. Colella, I will, yes, my husband is a teacher, and I'm very proud of that fact. My husband works very hard in this district to educate children, but I won't take a shot at you and your wife, who works in this school district, because I believe that all employees in this district do things that are valuable, and I won't stoop to that level. But thank you for pointing that out. I'm taking exception to the fact that you all spent $20,000 on microphones. That's a lot of money on microphones. As many of you know, my husband and I own a business that has to do with sound technology, and I don't think we've ever spent $20,000 on microphones. And it really burns my taxpayer butt when you all don't know how to operate them. You got $20,000 in mics. You do not have to spend that kind of money on microphones. When we have gotten rid of German, when we have gotten rid of Family Consumer Sciences, when our special ed kids don't have enough aids, when we don't have enough bus drivers, you all talk about how much money we're going to spend if we're elected, how we're going to spend excessive amounts of money. I think that's a misrepresentation because you all have spent $6,000 on someone's raise. You all have spent money on microphones. I'm just very disappointed. I'm very disappointed at the personal attacks. I am very disappointed at the character, misrepresentation of things that has been said. We have asked you to be accountable for some of your decisions, including $20,000 microphones. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Michelle Gallagher, 7 Heather Court. Yes, Mr. Colella, I do attend a lot of meetings. I am no stranger to coming to these meetings. Everybody here has seen me. I have been to education meetings. I have been to facility meetings. I've been to transportation meetings. I have three boys in this district. I am a very busy mom. I also have been very busy being a volunteer for the past nine years in this school district. I am the PTSA president at O'Block Junior High. I've attended three open houses since September. I sat and I listened to our teachers, to the curriculum. I helped run the fundraisers at O'Block PTA during the day, when a lot of parents can't be there. I have helped, I have volunteered. I'm going to stay classy. That is what my mother and my father told me to do, to stay classy, and I will continue to do that. I will not take cheap shots. I will not conduct myself in an ugly manner. And one of the things that I do want to mention this evening is something that has been very, I've followed since 2009, and it has been the classroom policy. In 2009, you eliminated the classroom size policy to be a guideline. I fought this for many years. I had a son that attended and was in classroom sizes, that they had an add-a-class every year, which they did up until 2009. There are now classrooms, and I know there's a classroom over in Adley with 30 students in it. And at one point, back prior to 2009, if there were over 28 in a classroom that was in fourth, fifth, sixth grade, they would add an eight. They no longer do that. And I understand that if a element, if a primary grade from K first or second would go over 25 students, you would add an eight. You no longer do that. I don't know what guidelines are being followed now, because I haven't followed it, and that's my own ignorance of not going back and following that. But I did follow that up until 2009, 2010. So I just want to say that classroom size, in my opinion, and I think a lot of parents in our community, has gotten larger and not smaller. And another thing that I've been talking with a lot of senior citizens in our community, and a lot of them feel that they have been not, not having that gold card, I've heard a lot of people that are very disappointed in that. I don't understand it, maybe I didn't attend the meeting, but you all discussed it, that I don't know if it's the booster group that gets the money from that gold card being eliminated. I just know that some of the seniors said that they really look forward to bridging with our younger students within the community, and they all, they no longer have that opportunity to go to a musical and enjoy something. Their tax dollars, they live here too, and they are unable to go and maybe visit our beautiful auditorium and see the musicals. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to speak this evening, but I had to after, living in the borough for 22 years off and on, that's the first time in a meeting I'd ever seen a school board member get up and congratulate themselves for attending meetings they were elected to attend. That just boggles my mind. Congratulations. You come to meetings like you're supposed to, like the people elected you to. Unbelievable. Secondly, I received this in the mail, some list of Secondly, I received this in the mail, some list of your education achievements for some of the school board members, Mr. Drake, Kellella, Dowdell. If you were to politifact these like the website does, and I'm just going to go over a couple, their education achievements, summer student programs, they would list that as pants on fire. They didn't start the summer student program. It's gone, we have less programs now than we'd had when they started. It's been around for years. My son's 17, was in these programs when he was six, seven, eight years old, and they're taking credit for it, when actually the programs are less. Reducing class size. Some truth, some not, not true, totally true. When you have 30 children in a sixth grade class and 25 in a kindergarten, that's not true across the board, it's not even close. It's disappointing, but I've been coming to a lot of meetings too, and I've seen the rhetoric and heard it and see the half-trues and the untruths. It's very disappointing as a taxpayer. I'll list one other here, you say you achieved getting a new reading program in all elementary schools. True, but what you don't say is, "We had to get a new reading program because these reading programs run their course, they're five to seven-year programs, and once they've run their course, you have to replace the books." So, this is not, this is something that any board would have done. This is not something you achieved. Look at what these people are saying, listen, read the truths, the half-trues, the untruths, and make your mind up. We've had four years, it's enough. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Agenda, please.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Shane McMasters Chair, recommend approval of the following use of facilities applications as listed.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of one-year renewal agreement with Combustion Services for Equipment Company for a control service agreement in the amount of $26,040.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to pay the GOB invoices as presented.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to sell previously-used outfield fence from the old PIVIC softball field to Sarah Catholic High School for $100.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to certify Plan Con Part F Attachment C, which actually describes the actions taken by the Plum Borough School District prior to contract execution on Plan Con New Holiday Park Elementary School project. Failure to fully disclose any information pertinent to the following may result in the denial of reimbursement for this project. Award to the lowest responsible bidder for any prime contract, issuance of permits and approval by local, state, and other government agencies, computation reimbursement, reimbursable capacity, architectural areas and scheduled area, and compliance with Act 34 of 1973 under the 20-year rule with 20% rule of alteration cost using determining the eligibility of building renovations for reimbursement as presented.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The Plum Borough School District Board of Directors resolves to award the general contract work, contract number 13225501, for the New Holiday Park Elementary School contingent upon receipt of all required bonds and other necessary governmental agency approvals to the following responsible bidder. Hudson Construction Incorporated, accepting the base bid in the amount of $10,348,000, rejecting all other base bids and alternates.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. St. Ledger?
Yes.
Mr. Tomorello?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Mr. Kellella?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. McGuff?
Yes.
Mr. McMasters?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The Plum Borough School District Board of Directors resolves to award the plumbing and fire protection construction work, contract number 13225502, for the New Holiday Park Elementary School, contingent upon receipt of all required bonds and other necessary governmental agency approvals to the following responsible bidder. Rabel Plumbing Company, accepting the base bid in the amount of $968,700, rejecting all other base bids and alternates.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tomorello?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Mr. Kellella?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. McGuff?
Yes.
Mr. McMasters?
Yes.
Mr. St. Ledger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The Plum Borough School District Board of Directors resolves to award the HVAC construction work, contract 13225503, for the New Holiday Park Elementary School, contingent upon receipt of all required bonds and other necessary governmental agency approvals to the following responsible bidder. Legalia Mechanical Incorporated, accepting the base bid in the amount of $1,687,300, rejecting all other base bids and alternates.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Mr. Kellella?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. McGuff?
Yes.
Mr. McMasters?
Yes.
Mr. St. Ledger?
Yes.
Mr. Tomorello?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Mr. McDuff?
Yes.
Mr. McDoff?
Yes.
Mr. McMasters?
Yes.
Mr. St. Ledger?
Yes.
Mr. Tomorello?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Mr. McDuff?
Yes.
Mr. McDoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDoff?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that items six, seven, eight, and nine were all the lowest Item 10. Recommend authorizing LR Kimball to proceed with a complete Plan Con Part G project accounting based on bids and Plan Con Part H project financing for submittal to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the New Holiday Park Elementary School as described in previous submissions.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kellella?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. McGuff?
Yes.
Mr. McDoff?
Yes.
Mr. St. Ledger?
Yes.
Mr. Tomorello?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that items six, seven, eight, and nine were all the lowest Item 10. Recommend authorizing LR Kimball to proceed with a complete Plan Con Part G project accounting based on bids and Plan Con Part H project financing for submittal to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the New Holiday Park Elementary School as described in previous submissions.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kellella?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. McGuff?
Yes.
Mr. McDoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDoff?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Mr. McDuff?
Yes.
Mr. McDoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDoff?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that items six, seven, eight, and nine were all the lowest bidders. Item 10. Recommend authorizing LR Kimball to proceed with a complete Plan Con Part G project accounting based on bids and Plan Con Part H project financing for submittal to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the New Holiday Park Elementary School as described in previous submissions.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Matthew White, custodian at O'Block Jr. High School, retroactive to October 4th, 2013.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Vicki Dobek, bus driver, retroactive to August 15th, 2013.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Lena D'Amico, bus aide, effective October 30th, 2013.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Kelly Lynn Innocent, substitute guidance counselor at Plum High School, effective October 31, 2013, with an end date to be determined by the superintendent.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following special services sponsors for the 2013-14 school year. Mr. Keith Nonnenberg, senior high ski club sponsor at a stipend of $80 per trip, not to exceed five trips per the school year. Mr. Matthew Magnuson, National Honor Society sponsor, at a stipend of $725.
I'll make those recommendations to the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the professional development leave request pursuant to public school code sabbatical for Mrs. Dana Peverato, sixth-grade teacher at Center Elementary School, beginning January 16, 2014 through the end of the 2013-14 school year.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the unpaid leave request for Ms. Sherry Horvath, custodian at Plum High School, beginning November 4th, 2014 through the 6th of November, 2014.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of an intermittent medical leave in accordance with the Family Medical Leave Act for Mrs. Kathleen Plonowski, bus driver, for the 2013-14 school year.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to adjust maternity leave of Ms. Kelly Hop, first-grade teacher at Holiday Park Elementary School, to begin on August 26, 2013 through December 2, 2013.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of following maternity leaves. Mrs. Jennifer Evans, kindergarten teacher at PIVIC Elementary School, beginning on or about February 18, 2014 through the end of the 2013-14 school year. Ms. Lindsay Schombacher, fifth-grade teacher at Center Elementary School, beginning on or about March 11, 2014 through the end of the 2013-14 school year. Mrs. Jill Kiss, kindergarten teacher at Holiday Park Elementary School, beginning on or about March 19, 2014 through May 27, 2014. Mrs. Renee Simone, computer teacher at Center and PIVIC Elementary Schools, beginning on or about April 16, 2014 through the end of the 2013-14 school year.
I'll make those recommendations to the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the Plum Borough School District and the Plum Borough Paraprofessional Education Support Professionals, PSEA NEA, for a one-year term commencing July 1, 2014 as attached.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Just briefly, I want to thank the paraprofessionals. It's extremely important that things be fair and reasonable in the community and with the school district today, and I appreciate everything that they do. They come to work, they work hard, we get no complaints about them, they're definitely an asset to this community and this school district. And thank you for acting so diligently and so quickly on this agreement.
Any additional comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Education Committee, Mr. Joe Tomorello Chair, recommend approval of the porch booking agreement for school pictures with Interstate Studios for the 2014-15 school year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the annual agreement with Western Psychiatric Institution and Clinics Inpatient Licensed School.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following overnight field trip requests. Dr. Davis to the Pete and Seat Conference in Hershey, Pennsylvania in February, and the music department students and chaperones for the professional performance in New York City, April 24 through 27.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number four is our additional item. Recommend approval to develop, plan, staff, and expend funds for an elementary autistic classroom beginning in the 2014-15 school year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments real quick. Approving this would truly help our district with education and finance perspectives. Building this autistic classroom would help us bring back our students at out-of-district programs that we have right now. Currently, we have 17 students in other out-of-district programs at a cost of $700,000 estimated. So, building this will definitely save our district hundreds of thousands of dollars by promoting this room and bringing back autistic students who are at out-of-district programs right now. So, I'm going to vote yes for this.
I just have one comment. I think if you look at the strategic direction from National PTA, I think one of their issues or one of their big concerns is the moving forward with our special ed department. And this is just another example, this board has moved forward and doing the right thing at the right time. There are a few districts in this county that have this type of program, and I have to commend for the people that were at the education committee, the fact that Mrs. Shire did such a wonderful job in promoting the program and explaining it to us. So, great kudos to the administrative staff, particularly Mrs. Shire, moving this program forward.
I'd also like to mention that I think the parents would be very happy with this program because they're able to keep their kids in their home district, perhaps they play Little League with them, you know, they see them in all kinds of places in the borough, so I've had several parents tell me that they really like this program because they're able to keep the kids here, thank you.
Any additional comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The Education Committee met on October eighth, two thousand thirteen, Mr. Tom Morello will make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool, we went over quite a few things, it was a lengthy meeting, we discussed starting the school year possibly a week early, I know students probably fringing at that, but the benefits of this would include ending the school year in May, and we would have more instruction time in the classroom before state assessments would come, but this is definitely not finalized, and we will be continuing to discuss this as the year moves on, we also received our school performance profiles about our elementary schools, and to say the least, we were pleasantly surprised, we didn't know really what to expect, this state really wasn't too keen on specifics, but our schools, just to put into perspective, did better or just as good as Fox Chapel Elementary Schools and Franklin Regional Elementary Schools, so kudos to all of our teachers, administrators, and everyone who had an impact on these scores, and the school performance is made up of quite a few different elements, the P S S A tests, the P V O S tests, and attendance, and a few more things, but we scored basically nineties and eighties for our elementary schools, so congratulations to all the principals at the elementary schools and the teachers and staff as well, we hope to have the junior high and high school scores in January of two thousand fourteen coming up, and finally, I just want to make a note that we will be launching our comprehensive planning process next month, the plan will serve as a roadmap to focus the district's continuous improvement efforts, a survey was created to gather feedback from the school community, a link to the survey is located on the district's main webpage until November twelfth, and that's all I have for this evening, thank you, Dr. Glasspool.
I just have a couple of comments, Mr. Tom Morello.
Yes.
Regarding our reading program that we started four years ago, that was a program that was inceptioned by teachers, educators, administrators, and consultants from Duquesne University, it was a comprehensive program, it was just not buying books and putting them on the shelf or have teachers use them, it was a revamping of our program, and the reality is, it cost the district seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we were proud to appropriate that money for that program, the second, the second issue was the summer reading program that somebody brought, there would have been no summer program if this board would not have approved, approved, the program in toto, which means that we'd not have enough professional staff to staff the program, we went and hired a consultant, the consultant did the program for us, it was this board that did that, no other board did that, this board did that, it was a totally different program, that has to be put on the record, and I'm proud of it, it is an achievement, thank you.
Thank you, the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand thirteen, immediately following the policy committee meeting in the high school boardroom. Finance Committee, Mr. Kevin Dowdell Chair, recommend approval of the treasurer's report and bill payments for September two thousand thirteen as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Delinquent real estate taxes and fees collected by Anderson Price for September two thousand thirteen, total amount collected, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-three dollars, twenty-one cents, recommend approval to accept the October budget transfer.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I'd just comment, several years ago, about four years ago, we had a full page of budget transfers at this time, and now we're looking at only one, so I think we've come a long way with getting our handle on our budget, the closer our budget, so we don't have quite as many transfers as we did in the past, so I'd like to thank the business department for keeping these, the budgets on track and keeping these transfers down to a minimum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept Blau Tierney Coon and Company, P C, to perform the mandatory P D E Part J audit for the new Pivot Elementary School at a cost of two thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the revised substitute employees' daily hourly rate schedule for two thousand thirteen fourteen school year as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to settle the two thousand thirteen commercial tax assessment appeal for tax parcel number seven three four C three five nine and seven three four C three two eight as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to donate transportation services for Sugar Plum Days, two thousand thirteen.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, this is something we provide every day for the Sugar Plum Days, assist our citizens to be transported to various facilities during this event, I think it's scheduled for Saturday, what's the?
December thirteen?
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Fourteenth, December fourteenth, thank you.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to sell the P H S diving team wading pool to North Hills Water Gardens for fifty dollars.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes. Would someone please explain to the borough what that is and why it's only fifty dollars?
It's a piece of equipment that we no longer use, and really would be no use to anybody else, essentially.
As I understand it, we couldn't even find people to take it for free.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
It's correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept a donation for Wal- from Walmart to Regency Park Elementary School of twenty-five gift cards valued at fifty dollars each for classroom supplies.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
I don't know if there's a way of thanking Walmart for this generous donation, used classroom supplies.
Use the cards at Walmart.
Okay.
Will they be divided amongst the teachers, or how are they going to do that?
I think it's each classroom.
Oh, classroom, okay.
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the Center Elementary School storm water claim as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, Sal mentioned this earlier, but I would like to thank Gene for his efforts in coming up with this, this claim, originally, the insurance company was going to pay us somewhere around seven or eight thousand dollars for this storm damage claim at Center Elementary, but due to his efforts, we were able to get the forty-three thousand dollars from the insurance company, so that was quite a, quite a big difference, it saved the district a considerable amount of money, so again, I'd like to thank Mr. Maricini for his efforts in receiving this additional insurance claim, so thanks, Gene.
So I believe the total cost was about sixty-two thousand dollars, so.
Sixty-seven thousand is the total.
So this is almost two-thirds of the, of the money. Any other discussion?
Yes, it was earlier mentioned about the sixteen or twenty thousand dollar microphone system, and whenever this was coming up for approval in the finance committee, I couldn't understand it either, and then it was explained to me what this, these microphones were for, and they were replacing a system that was ten to twelve years old, and it's not just for the board, it's for the auditorium, is that correct?
There's more than microphones to the system, but yes, yes, okay, just wanted to make that clear.
But any, any discussions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The Finance Committee met on October twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, Mr. Dowdell will make this report.
Yes, thank you, we reviewed the tax collection reports for the year, so far, eighty-five percent of the collections have been made, and the deadline to pay your school taxes without incurring a penalty is this Thursday, October thirty-first, so if you haven't already paid your taxes, it would be good to get them in this week, so you don't incur any penalties. The two percent discount's already passed, that was, what, August thirty-first, I think, was the deadline for the two percent discount, and then, so the deadline for the real estate taxes is this Thursday, the October thirty-first, so if you haven't paid them, it would be good to get them in, otherwise you'll be charged a penalty, the delinquent tax collection are on track, the district, from the district's expectations, the transfer date to go to Keystone will be determined with coordination with the borough, that'll be sometime in the, in the future, we'll coordinate the transfer to Keystone with the borough, that's the delinquent tax collections, we also reviewed the estimated two thousand fourteen fifteen budget for the next, next school year, like Sal had mentioned, it was for attendance, there was only one, one citizen that attended that meeting, seems like they all come out at the end and ridicule us, after, after we go through a long drawn-out process of going through the budget over several months, but the estimates were based on contractual, historical, and known economical and financial factors, it is projected that the district will have a shortfall of one point five million dollars, this does not include the effects of upcoming contract, contract negotiations, which will likely broaden the deficit, our primary revenue sources, the increase from local taxes is zero point eight four percent, the increase from state tax, state revenues is three point one one percent, and the federal revenues is actually a decrease of ten point five percent, so the state is actually the primary increase in our, our funding at three percent, and the federal government is actually reducing their contribution by ten percent, so the total anticipated increase is approximately two point four percent, or about one point three million dollars, that's the increase of our revenue, on the expense side, the district expects to increase the, an increase on the pension contributions of, from four point seven million dollars to six million dollars in the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year, the district contribution will increase over twenty-five percent, or approximately six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, pension cost is a looming problem for all school districts with no relief in sight for many years, the amount does not include salary for increases that will also increase the, the pension costs, additionally, the district anticipates a twelve percent increase in healthcare costs, as reported by the Allegheny County Intermediate Union, the combination of these two increases, the pension and the healthcare, six hundred thirty-one thousand dollars for the pension, four hundred seventy-six thousand dollars for healthcare increases, totals about one point one million dollars in increases by these two line items itself, the additional increase is about four hundred thousand dollars, that's from all the other items combined, except for salaries for the, that school year, and my calculation, by using historical salary increases, we may see an additional expense of one point two million dollars in salary increases, leaving us somewhere in the neighborhood of two point seven million dollars in deficits for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fourteen fifteen school year, these are similar deficits that we've been experiencing over the last several years, and we probably will continue to experience these because of the pension costs and the rising costs of healthcare, as well as the salary increases, so we'll have a work cut out for us in the upcoming year to come, find a way to come up with this huge deficit we'll experience, did a quick calculation, if we were to cover this by purely tax increases, it would be a two mil increase, which is, we're not allowed to do by state law, so I think we can only come up with about half a million dollars at the most if we decide to, to raise taxes up to the index, it would still leave us about two million dollars out, even using the maximum increase we're allowed by, by the state, I just as a follow-up with the, the new Holiday Park, construction project, this new school, the total cost is about fifteen point one million dollars, which is about six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars less than what we paid for Pivot, and the new bids that just came in the other day are one hundred nine thousand dollars less than they were in September, that's my report, thank you.
Now, I have a question, did we already raise taxes, point three one one four percent of one mil, or did I read something wrong?
Two point one percent.
How much?
Two point one percent of the twenty-two point two mils, that was the index.
That's the index.
No, but we've already raised taxes, so that will be reflected in this budget, right? Point three one one four percent, I thought we raised, over the index?
No, we didn't go over the index.
But did we raise taxes?
We, we set the mileage at, at the index, because of the reassessments, it's, it's all an individual, it all depends with the county assessments, we, we set the mileage, we actually reduced it from the twenty-two point two to eighteen point something based off of the index from, from the state, and it all depends on individual tax assessments, some people will get a tax deduction and some will get an increase.
Because of the assessments, but I mean, you know, us as a board, we actually raised taxes, right?
It'll be on, on some, some people will see tax increase.
The mileage rate went up, that was necessary to balance the budget, this year's budget.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so we raised the mileage point three one one four percent?
No, two point one percent.
No, that wasn't two point one percent.
The index.
The index.
Went to the index, I don't think it was two point one, I think it was one point seven.
But Gene said it was two point one.
That's this upcoming year.
Oh.
That's, that's the index for this upcoming year.
Are you referring to thirteen fourteen or fourteen fifteen?
Thirteen fourteen, well, no, 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 the new, the new, no, yeah, thirteen fourteen.
Okay, that's the current school year.
Right.
We're in now, the board decided to raise the increase, allowable increase up to the index of two point one, that's when it was twenty-two point two mils.
Okay, then we went over the index.
No.
No, no, you didn't go over the index, you went up to the index, and it generated about four hundred thousand dollars roughly.
So you're saying we didn't raise taxes?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying the, the taxes were increased, the mileage was increased up to the index, and it did generate additional real estate taxes, yes it did.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But that's all pending on reassessments and so forth, so, you know, appeals, so we, we still have to wait, wait out the appeals process to see actually what the, what the net effect will be, and that'll be ongoing for probably another year or so.
It's gonna be ongoing for a while.
Yeah.
But that, we are generating additional revenue through that, right?
When, 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 before the reassessment, the district's taxable assessed value was about one point two billion dollars, one point two, after the reassessment, it went up to one point five billion dollars, so the taxable assessments went up three hundred thousand dollars, but on the flip side is the mileage went down from twenty-two point two mils to eighteen point seven five eight mils, so in actuality, people could have realized like a fifteen percent reduction, so the assessment went up, the mileage went down, the net effect was it went down, now, one of the factors that you'll see in the estimated budget that Mr. Dowdell was saying was, we estimate our real estate taxes to go up, one of the big reasons is because of Longwood, we, we paid them back over four hundred some thousand dollars, so now they're back in the system, and that generally constitutes the, the majority of that raise.
Well, I thought it was supposed to be revenue neutral, you know, the assessments.
It is revenue neutral.
And, but I thought we made a lot more than, we did not?
No.
We did our calculation, and we had to put in our reserve, which, if my memory serves me, it was about a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars for assessment appeals, that was part of what the, the court made us do, now, Mr. Price's office, and, and, with the help of Mr. Gillio, we ran that calculation to make sure we were revenue neutral, and we were in our calculations, based on the Judge Weddick's assessment, so we're in compliance.
Okay, I thought I read somewhere in some of the notes that we were making out.
No, the borough was allowed to make five percent windfall, we're not, we were not permitted.
To make any windfall.
Not, not at all, we were revenue neutral.
Okay, I'll check my notes.
Okay. Thank you. Before we move on, I wanted, I want to make a couple clarifying comments here, we didn't pay twenty thousand dollars for a microphone, we paid twenty thousand dollars for a new system, the new system we had was several years old, and we received many complaints in board meetings about inability of people to hear us, our staff was having difficulty operating the system, and it wasn't functioning well for some of the school activities, this was not funded out of the operating budget, this was funded out of capital expenditures, and we get a lot of confusion now, out in the public, when we, when we purchase something or make improvements, and an inference that by buying microphones, we took away from education, and that can't be further from the, from the truth, there's two separate budgets, for a long time, this district did not maintain two separate budgets, which really is, is totally against just general accounting principles, if anybody's been to an accounting class, you have an operating budget, which is your day-to-day expenses, and then you have your capital budget, which is for your long-term expenditures, and you fund them different ways, you fund your, your, your day-to-day operations through your taxes, and you fund your capital expenditures through your borrowing, and one of the things this board has done very diligently is to make sure that our accounting systems are up to the general accounting principles, so that when Standards and Poor's comes in and evaluates the districts when we're out borrowing money, we can get the highest rating possible, and this district, for the last two bond issues, has obtained one of the highest ratings that districts generally can achieve, an A-plus rating, this means that when we float bond issues, we don't typically pay for insurance, which is a different additional cost, and we get a slightly higher return on our investment, we get more interest, which is more for the district, so we, we are able to save the district a lot of money on the capital, so we use these capital expenditures then to improve the facilities which are necessary for our children's education. for our children's education. For the longest time, and even before I was on this board, when the board ran into financial straits, they would cut capital expenditures. They'd stop buying buses. They'd stop painting buildings. They didn't do any maintenance on the major HVAC components, the compressors, 20, 30,000 dollar components that are supposed to be maintained on a, on a scheduled basis. And if one of those fails, all of a sudden, you have a huge expenditure that's not in your budget that you have to go out and, and purchase. So we're not spending operating budget. We're not taking away from the educational system when we do these projects. And you're going to hear a lot about, more about these projects in the future because we do have a capital budget now. So we are going to do things. We're going to put in air conditioning in center. That's a capital expenditure. It's not going to take away from the educational cost. But it is going to enhance education because that building is now going to be air-conditioned. And we heard a lot of, of complaints from parents about how hot our, our elementary schools are. And so we're going to go ahead and add air conditioning to that school here for the next school year. Those expenses are going to start this year because of the lead time on components. We're going to paint the inside of buildings that haven't been painted in 10 years. They don't look very good. They don't look very inviting. And that's not good for the overall maintenance of the facility. So we're going to start those painting, those painting activities that haven't taken place. We have roofing systems. The roofs are not just a roof. They're a system. They're a mechanical system that has to be maintained. We saw what happened a few years ago with O Block when we didn't maintain the roofing system and we had a huge expense in doing roofing repairs. So we're going to invest in the, the infrastructure in this school district because we have to. Because we can have the best teachers, we can have the best students. But if we don't have buildings and facilities to put them in that are safe, then that's not going to be a successful school district. So we have to be careful when people are talking about how we're spending some monies and where that money's actually coming from, the capital budget or the operating budget. You know, we talked about the R Mark costs and, and our outsourcing. We didn't lose any jobs by going to R Mark. The cost for our R Mark personnel is fairly close to what we were paying ourselves. But we decided as a board that there were things that could be, could be achieved through an organization that has a huge buying power that we don't have. We do the same thing when we buy diesel fuel. We can look at outside contractors on ourselves for diesel fuel. But we go through the Allegheny Intermediate Unit because they buy in huge bulk. They buy 5 million gallons of diesel fuel. We need 110,000 gallons. We can't get the pricing that somebody who can get a large bulk commodity. I spent a lot of time in this, in this building. And, and when I leave, I see janitors and I stop by, I say hello. I've yet to have a janitor come to me and tell me that they didn't have cleaning supplies or they weren't working. And so I say to the janitors, if you as a janitor or any district employee has an issue with something that, that's going on, you have our email addresses and you have our phone numbers. Every board member here is open to hear from you. And so I don't know, I haven't had anybody talk to me about these because if I had, we would have been talking about them at the facilities committee meetings. So I think we have to be careful at the, the information that's being put out. I think everybody needs to understand how a budget is run and how we look at all of our expenses. And I think we have to keep that in mind.
I just have two comments, Mr. Drake. Over the past six months now, we've accumulated over 26 million dollars for capital projects, projects for this school district, including a new school. That means in a four-year period of time, we built two new schools, air-conditioned a third, and have every capital project that administration has deemed appropriate funded for, for the next five years. I mean, this is, it's a testimony of what this board does because we do it because it's our job. It's our job to look at the bond markets every day and to pull the trigger at the right time to gain 6 million dollars. You know, I was in here in June and there was a call from the back of the room and they wanted to know how many of the board members had children. And I raised my hand and I said, I have two grandchildren. And somebody in the back of the room had to gawl to yell to me, grandchildren don't count. Well, over the past three months, I can tell you, I've been in contact with a lot of different organizations. And one of the priorities that this school district needs to make is investment in family, family engagement. And if you look at National PTA, it's a priority of National PTA where we get parents more involved in their education of their children. We need to do that. In fact, they actually equate it to spending a thousand dollars or more, more per pupil per year. So these are the type of things that the board does. We tear the silos down. We just don't talk about education to education. Everything transcends, transcends each other, more or less. So we've done that. Those numbers are irrevocable. Thank you.
Well, you know, I, I had some difficulties with the capital budget. I disagreed with the fact that we took 2.5 out of the budgetary reserve to put into the capital budget. And if I'm not mistaken, I think we also borrowed 10 mil to put in that as well. So, you know, those are the two things that I disagreed on. I, I thought that maybe those, that money could be better used for education. And, you know, as far as our facilities are concerned, I think, you know, we pretty much kept them up. I mean, Kimball even came and did a study and he said that the infrastructure of our schools, while they needed to be replaced in time, were very well maintained. So, you know, I, I just have a little bit of difficulty with that. And I know you disagree with him, Mr. Drake, but that's okay. We can agree to disagree. I just do not agree with taking money out of the budgetary reserve or borrowing money to put into capital reserves. Okay, go.
That's okay. So, so we'll have the, like I've had for the two years before I was even on the budget. You know, this district borrowed, took, raised taxes on the citizens.
We did not.
Before I got on the ba, before I got on the board, yes, yes, the, the board did, they sure did.
When?
And we ended up with a budget surplus of over 8 million dollars. Mr. McGuff was the finance chair at the time and tried to get the board to give at least a million dollars back to the citizens, which the board didn't do. And one of the bases for not doing that was the board said they were going to use 3 million dollars of that surplus to cover the expenditures for building the school and other infrastructure. That money was earmarked by the board for that. They should have, at that time, that money should have been set in a capital expenditure budget. That's how things are supposed to run, an operating budget and a capital budget. It was not done. Instead, it became a crutch to say, when we start having operating expenditure deficits, we're going to tap into funding that should have been earmarked for capital to do that. I'm sorry, that's wrong. Any accountant, any accounting class, any accounting professor would tell you, that's wrong. When you borrow for a purpose, you should earmark it for a purpose.
We raised taxes in 2004, 2005, 1 mil. Mr. McGuff and I were against it. Okay? And then whenever we talked about giving it back, Mr. McGuff and I both voted for it. But what you have to remember is that was before the bottom fell out of the market. That was before everything went haywire in terms of the financial, and our finances went down as well. Times change. I mean, and we never voted. We never voted that that's where the money should go. It was merely a suggestion. When we voted not to raise taxes, it was somebody on the board that said, well, we could use that money, you know, to, to renovate the schools. And that's why we're not going to, to give the mil back. But we never voted. I mean, I checked the records. I went through. We never voted. You don't work on a suggestion, you know? And then somebody else says, yes, that's fine. Well, maybe we could do that. But in the meantime, then, you know, in 2008, everything went south. So certainly when, when situations change, you work and change with it. That money never should have been taken out of there, not with the way the finances were, not with, with this, our budgetary deficits. That was not spending money well. I'm sorry, that's the way I feel.
And I appreciate that, but, but I'll call the question that the deficit, the, the economy, because I heard another version of that when we were talking about a specific contract that in 2008, nobody knew the budget was, that the economy was bad. So you have to pick one, one or the other. Either you knew in 2008 or you didn't, you didn't know in 2008.
2008, 2009. You took that money out, not in 2008 or 2009. You took that money out in 2012.
That money should have been taken out 2008, 2009.
Well, it was just a suggestion, I'm saying. We never voted.
It was a suggestion by just about everybody on the board. I'm sorry, but this is not public comment session. This is a discussion at the board level. Thank you.
Well, at, at the time, we had, we renovated the high school and the junior high school and center school. We still had four other schools we needed renovation. And after, after that fact, we started looking into renovating the other schools, which we, we did. And that's where we are now with the new PIVIC and the new Holiday Park Elementary School. So we're going to set that money aside for these building projects, which we did. Okay, we didn't officially move that money to a capital expenditure fund, but it, it should have been moved that way because that's what the intent was.
I'd have never voted for that.
Well, okay. But it, you know, I, I went to the, the PSP website, the Pennsylvania School Board Association, and they have recommendations for the fund balance. And what they tell you is not to use your fund balance for operating expenses. It clear, that's one of the, the 10 items that they list for the use of your capital reserve or your, your fund balance. It should be used for one-time expenses like capital expenses and so forth, but they recommend not using it for operating expenses. This isn't my opinion, this is the, the recommendations from the PSBA.
Well, capital expenses, if you say one-time, painting is certainly not a one-time, you know, and anything.
You don't, you don't do it every year.
Well, I mean, there are a lot of things you don't do every year.
Well, that, that's what you use the, the capital money for.
Capital expenditure is usually defined as having a lifetime of at least five years.
And you put all that money aside and practically, we have, we're going to, we're going to have two new brand new, new elementary schools. What, what upkeep will there be on that? We also have renovated center. We renovated O Block. We've renovated the high school within the last 10 or 12 years. So, you know, when I look at all that, that lovely schedule that we have, I kind of wonder, you know, our schools are relatively new in terms of renovations because they say you're not even able to borrow money until your school is 20 years old. And then we're going to have two, the only school that we're going to have left will be Regency. And with the amount of money that we have in the capital account, I, I don't think it's going to cost that much to renovate Regency even if we decided to do it.
And, and, and that, that may be, but over that period of time, you still should be painting your buildings. You need to be taking care of your parking lots, which we haven't been doing. They're, they're degrading and will probably need to be milled and repaved, whereas if we had maintained them, we wouldn't have had to do that. You need to be doing your preventative maintenance on your major components, like your, your chiller units, which have to be torn down every 10 years, or you end up buying a new one over a period of time. Those type of things, it's just like taking care of a house. If you, if you don't maintain your furnace, you don't maintain your air conditioner, you don't do your maintenance on your, your refrigerator and your freezer and your washer and dryer, eventually they break down, you go out and buy a new one. And that's much more expensive than doing the maintenance on it. We haven't been doing the maintenance on it. You, you still have, even on your car, you have to do maintenance on it in order to keep it running. These buildings need maintenance on them to, to be maintained and, and at a cost effective. These buildings should last more than 20 years. After 20 years, you shouldn't have to do major renovation on them if you're maintaining them. If you're not maintaining them, you will. So my, my hope is that with the new PIVIC and the new Holiday Park, the overall maintenance cost will go down. We built better buildings. We built environmentally friendly buildings. We built buildings that are efficient. So we looked at that when we selected materials in that to reduce the overall maintenance cost on those buildings.
I just happen to think that education and people were a little bit more important than that. That's where I would put my money. I mean, if my kid gets sick and I need a new refrigerator, I think I would, there wouldn't be any.
Right. But that, that comes back to the principle of tax and spend. All you do is taxing and spending the taxpayer's money. We have a strategic plan on how to do that. Nope, mine's dead. So we have a strategic plan on how to do that. You know, and the goal this board is to, to make sure that we have high-performing schools so we can increase our student achievement. And we're doing that. And that's, I think that's so important. But the reality is, tax and spend doesn't work anymore. You know, we just can't do that. You know, if we would have signed that a contract extension with the Plum Borough Education Association, it would be 924,000 dollars more in debt. That's another mil tax increase. Where are we going to get that money from? You know, people have to start asking basic questions. You know, we need to change chaos into common sense. And that's what we're doing. And it's simple.
I just happen to think that spending money on education is more important. I think you can educate kids in a box, really. You know, you don't need to have wonderful schools, although I would love to have them. I mean, I think it's important. I think, you know, but, you know, when, when you balance it out, I guess I just care more for education than I do for anything else.
Then why did we go ahead and build a new PIVIC? We built a new PIVIC because the facilities was in such dire straits.
Well, that's.
That's what, that's what we were told. You know, there were two people on this board that said, PIVIC was built at the wrong site. And I said it was built at the wrong time because of the interest rate that we were probably paying for Buy America bonds. Now that sequesters come about and the federal government is not paying the interest that they said they would pay on the Buy America bonds, it's costing additional 40,000 dollars a year. That's. I think it's right, Mr. Maricini, it's about 40,000?
Yeah, it was, typically we would give back about 441,000 from the federal government. And they could, the sequester cut that down by 10 percent.
Yeah. You know, every student deserves to be in a high-performing school. And that's, that's the goal. I mean, we're going to do that. You know, and, you know, you take a look at technology, four years ago, there was not one iPad in a classroom in this school district, not one. Today, there's over 650. We've done the right thing. We've invested in education. You know, we invested in staff development. We've done the right things and it's paying dividends. Just look at our schools, our performances of our elementary schools. Teachers doing a great job. Principals are leading. Teachers are inspiring. So we're on the right track.
Well, we used to have 7 mil in our budgetary reserve and now we only have 1.5. So, I mean, I don't know. I've realized.
Look at the pension and healthcare costs. Those are two big ones, in salaries. You add up those three and that's where it all went.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday of November 19, 2013 at 6:00 PM in the high school boardroom. Policy Committee, Mr. Rich Zuko Chair. The Policy Committee is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, November 12, 2013 at 6:00 PM in the high school boardroom. Transportation Committee, Mr. Tom McGuff Chair. The Transportation Committee did not meet this month. Athletic Committee, Mr. John St. Ledger Chair. Recommend approval to hire the following 2013-14 winter coaches as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the volunteer coaches for the 2013-14 school year as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation as well.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The Athletic Committee met on October 8, 2013. Mr. St. Ledger will make this report.
I have no real report, just an announcement about winter athletic physicals. They, they'll be held at the high school on Thursday, November 7th at 7:45. And then later on that morning, they'll move to the junior high. So any athlete who wants to play winter sports needs to pick up a physical form, return it completed to the nurse prior to November 7th. And their, the one important note is there's no fee for the athletic physicals. Thank you.
Thank you. Food Service and Nutrition Committee, Ms. LaRata White Chair. The Food Service and Nutrition Committee did not meet this month. Mrs. White will make a report.
Yes, thank you. Mrs. Lazaro wanted me to announce the fact that she's starting a new program on Monday, November 4th, at the senior high only. And this program will take place between 6:45 and 7:25 AM. So this has to be at breakfast. She's asking students who visit the Mustang Cafe to check out the new drinks that she's offering. Uh, she's offering delicious hot beverages, and they're only a dollar apiece. Some of the ones that she is offering is delicious hot chocolate with marshmallows, chai tea latte, breakfast blend coffee, steamy cappuccino, flavor of the week, pumpkin spice, white chocolate caramel, French vanilla, hazelnut, Swiss mocha, or smores. I think I want to come here for breakfast. It's only a dollar a cup, and I just love chai tea. She also wanted to remind everybody, uh, how to access the food service website. Uh, you go to the district, which is in the toolbar above, and then what you do is hit food service, and you'll be able to find all the new things that she's offering. Breakfast with grandparents will be next week. Adelaide will be November 6th to 13th, and all other schools will be November 8th to the 15th. Okay? Thank you very much.
What was the times again?
6:45 to 7:25 AM. A dollar for chai tea.
Maybe I'm on my way to work.
Yeah, cappuccino, hot chocolate, uh, breakfast blend coffee. They all sound good.
Thank you. Intergovernmental Committee, Mr. John St. Ledger Chair. The Intergovernmental Committee met on October 1st, 2013. There will be no report this evening. Forbes Road Career and Technology Center, Mr. John St. Ledger Representative. Mr. St. Ledger will make this report.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, we, we met last week and, um, we're, I'm happy to report that, uh, that we budgeted for 750 students this year, and we actually have 769, but 95 of those students are full-time. So actually, the, for tuition purposes, we actually have about 864 kids, uh, or children enrolled in the program over there. So that should have a positive impact on, 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 uh, our budget as well. We had a blood drive there today, pretty good turnout. Next week, I'll be attending the Occupational Advisory Committee, November the 5th. Uh, we talk about, um, you know, the community, industry, educational leaders. We're going to all get together and talk about the programs that they offer there. And, um, next spring, April 12th, we're going to have a fundraiser, a 5K run walk to benefit the Forbes Road CTC. So any runners out there, if you're interested, come see me. All right? Thank you.
Were you able to attend any of their dinners?
Uh, just the holiday dinner I go to, that's it.
Okay, because our, our previous representative could hardly wait for the dinners because they have the food service up there, and he said they were wonderful.
Yep. They, they do have stuff there during the meetings, but I usually pass.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Eastern Area Schools, Mrs. Loretta White Representative. Mrs. White will make this report.
Yes, we did have a meeting on Thursday, and it was very short because that was open house, and, uh, we, we got a chance to tour the school. And, you know, I've been a representative on that board for quite some time, and every time I go, I'm just so terribly impressed with the kinds of programs that they are offering. So, um, the open house went well, and at the next board meeting, we will be getting figures, you know, how many people attended and, uh, everything that went on. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Legislative Policy Council, Mr. Sal Colella Representative. There will be no report this evening. Allegheny Intermediate Unit Number Three, Mr. Tom McGuff, board member. Mr. McGuff will make this report.
Last evening was our AIU board meeting, and I was so very pleased. Uh, one of the items that our director, Dr. Lindner, had brought up was the Champions of Change. And earlier this evening, uh, we recognized Missy Karkowski, and, uh, I was so very proud to see that. And I just, I think it's important to read, this is on the White House Champions of Change website, and I think this is something that we can all, uh, take encouragement from. "The best ideas come from the American people. Everyone has a story to tell. Everyone has a part to play. All across the country, ordinary Americans are doing extraordinary things in their communities to out-innovate, out-educate, and to out-build the rest of the world. Every week, these Champions of Change are invited to the White House to share their ideas to win the future." And I really feel that Missy is, is just one of those points of that positive change that we're seeing in education, and I'm so very proud of that and very proud that she would have been recognized, uh, representing our district and all of the good, hard work that's being done there. I had the privilege of attending the 2013 PSBA School Leadership Conference a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, I have a packet, and there were two of the members that weren't at the last committee meeting, but I have packets for you, and it's just, I called the best ideas. Uh, these are some of the districts in the state that were recognized for student achievement and some of the innovative programs. So I have a packet, and Andy, I, I literally, I had chocolate, but it melted in my trunk. So, uh, this survived though. This survived, so I, I have kind of a glob of these Hershey kisses, but I, I brought this back instead, and I think it'll be richer and better tasting.
Melted in your trunk in October.
Right. Uh, and then finally.
Must have been a real hot day.
It was, actually, a real hot day. Um, I also was a, a part of the delegate assembly, and this is the, for, for voting on the 2014 legislative platform. And I'd like to just pass this down. You can take a glance. Uh, I have just kind of capsulated, uh, the issues that were voted on and just kind of a summary of, of the platform, and you can take a look at it. Um, I was representing Plum Borough, but there through the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, and I just want to thank you for allowing me that opportunity to represent this fine district.
Thank you. President's Report, Mr. Andrew Drake. Mr. Drake will make this report.
Thank you. Today was the end of our first nine-week grading term. On October 23rd, we had 250 fifth and sixth grade students in our high school gym participate in the 2013 Battle of the Books. Congratulations to all of our participants, and thank you to all of our volunteers. Thursday, October 31st is Halloween, and the Borough Trick or Treat is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Please be extra careful if you're driving, as the trick-or-treaters may have limited vision with their costumes. Parents, please make sure your trick-or-treaters have reflective clothing and/or lights to make them visible to the drivers. Sunday, November 3rd is daylight savings time. Make sure you turn your clocks back an hour. Tuesday, November 5th is Election Day. There will be no school, but there will be parent-teacher conferences. November 11th is Veterans Day, and on behalf of the Plum Borough School Board, I'd like to thank all of our veterans in advance for their service to our country. On November 13th at noon, we will conduct our second Plum Connect test message. Please sign up on our website for email and text message alerts. November 18th and 19th will be picture retakes. November 28th through December 2nd is Thanksgiving break. November is Native American Month and National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. Also, the Plum Borough Foundation for Education Enhancement is soliciting applications for trustees. The foundation's purpose is to support and enhance the educational experience of the